6:00 PM, we're going to get started. First up is Human Resources and Government Operations Supervisor Borst.
Is this the Heisler chair? Yeah, I moved it.
All right, thank you Chairman. We'll call the Human Resources Government Operations Committee to order. Issue number one. The following positions were reviewed and approved by Vacancy Committee on November 13th, 2025. Facilities Cleaner, Laborer and Senior Cleaner. Senior Account Clerk and Senior Account Clerk, two Senior Account Clerks in Finance, and a part-time Cook for Office of Aging. They are all approved through vacancy. It's all committee approval only. Can I get a motion in a second? Do you have a second? All right, discussion.
Didn't somebody mention at the last meeting they wanted to have a discussion about cutbacks as far as hiring?
It's later on in the agenda. It is...
New unfinished business on the next page.
Unfinished business, number one, on the next page.
Do we ever say no to hiring?
Well, these are refilling. They're not hiring. I mean, they are, but they're refilling budgeted positions. There are some times that there's been times where we've said no, but generally, these are positions that have been budgeted for.
Our budget that's increasing again this year.
Yep.
Well, I guess, you know, not to get too far into the discussion because I know it's going to come up later. The question is, you know, by eliminating some of these, is it going to be an overtime issue? Are they... I think to make the general statement that we're not going to refill positions is just a... I understand where it's coming from, but it's kind of a bold thing to say. I think you have to look at some of them individually. And I'm with you as far as saying maybe we don't need to refill a lot of these positions. I'm just saying that I think you got to have the discussion with the department head a little bit, too, to say, okay, what do you need? What is this going to mean long-term should this position not get filled? At least give them a chance to be heard on it a little bit.
I don't disagree with that. I'm just asking if we ever balked.
There have been some that we've...
There's been some that have been...
I mean, there's...
Not make it through vacancies.
And there's definitely discussions in vacancy about it. And they, you know, they come and they have their sheet that says this is why we... They make their case why they need it. And, you know, there's questions asked and answered normally. It's not a blanket stamp when they come in. And then this is the second stage of the committee. Committee decides whether or not it goes through.
You know, the other thing you could also bring up if you wanted to really tighten the clamps on these positions is, you know, some of these refills are committee approval only. If you want to let the whole board get involved in all these refills, you know, you could change your policy on how you do refills and let the board have a bite at the apple on every position that comes up. That's another option going forward if you wanted to do that. That way, it's not just a committee approval. Everybody gets a shot at it. Something to consider.
I'm on vacancy, so I've already listened to all the arguments from the department heads, and I already approved them. So I don't feel like...
Going through it again, huh? Yeah, I hear you.
Yeah.
Now, I'm just asking the question because sometimes it feels a little helpless to check every line for need and necessity.
I think we have to have a little bit of trust in our department heads that not to come to us if they don't need the position. You know, we hire good people to know whether they need it or not. We kind of have to trust them as well as if they're saying they need it, we kind of have to trust them. That's why we put them there.
Maybe we need to look at the policy to do a more targeted review per position that comes up. But I don't think we can do a blanket, we're not going to hire anybody else position. I just think that's going to result in overtime. It's going to result in...
You could...
You know, we have mandated...
Cost you more than hiring the position.
As a county, we have mandated services, so we have to provide them.
And part of the reason, too, that way they went to the committee approval only is because it takes probably at least two months from the time a vacancy comes up to the time the job gets posted, to the time it goes to vacancy committee to this committee, to the board. So they tried to streamline it by taking two weeks out in that process on refills and not create and fill new. That was the reason that the policy changed to committee approval only. But again, you know, it's just another layer, and it'll stall the fill two weeks to a month, depending on how it plays out, which would, you know, obviously buy you time down the road or save you money however you wanted to look at it.
But on some positions that are, you know, really needed, it's really, you know, you're going to have to pay overtime for somebody else to cover while they're...
Yeah, you're going to cost yourself more in overtime than you would have if you'd approved the position. But I'm just saying it's... I'm trying to bring up the question.
Yep, absolutely.
We need to look for wherever we can for savings.
Yep.
But I think, I'm just going to reiterate, I think it's got to be targeted. Like, if I think of DHS, Public Health, probation, even codes, not refilling or not hiring in some of those departments depending on vacancies, our constituents are going to have, you know, delayed services. Road maintenance might not occur, might not have someone to plow. Like, so I think it needs to be very targeted on what we look at. So, I don't know.
Yeah, a lot of our departments touch on public safety. Without workers, they're not as safe.
Well, DHS, you've got caseloads and probation caseloads that could increase wait time and cause delays. I don't know. I don't have an answer.
Well, neither do I, but that's why I'm just trying to bring it up, just to send the message.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay. Because I could see that it wasn't going to be... Going to be approved, so it's not hurting anything at this point.
Okay.
Issue number two. Approve the reclassification of one full-time deputy sheriff position to one full-time sergeant position.
I'll make the motion.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Discussion, Chair.
Good evening, Chair.
This goes in full board?
This goes in full board, yeah.
So I, just hearing this discussion now, I understand the board is always looking for savings, and I completely understand that. Since January 1 of 2024, I've analyzed overtime widespread in the agency. And one of the things that I have noticed is that we currently have five sergeants assigned to the patrol division. Five does theoretically work, except each sergeant gets approximately 121 past days per year, up to 168 hours vacation, up to 12 sick days per year, 32 hours personal, up to 120 hours of comp time, and 14 holidays they can take off at no... without hurting their leave accruals. So the thought behind this was reclassification of deputy sheriff to sergeant. At most would be about a $6,000 increase depending on where the deputy and where the sergeant pay scale. It depends who's selected and where they fall within that pay scale. It's my estimation this would save approximately $25,000 to $30,000 in overtime costs, and my calculations show that January 1, 24 to present, we're over $100,000 in overtime just for road sergeants alone. I think this would help with past day coverage, and I talked to an agency very similar in size to the west of us, and they also have six sergeants as opposed to the five. Doing a little research online, you can theoretically do it with 4.2 employees, but the recommendation is always to round up. And the quote is, since you can't hire 0.2 of a person and you need to accommodate days off, vacation, sick time, training, court, et cetera, the practical staffing requirement is five. Five gives you enough cushion for full coverage without constant overtime. Unfortunately, they're still overtime. So my proposal is that we would reclassify deputy position. That would still leave 15 deputy sheriffs assigned strictly for patrol, and it would complement the sergeant staff.
Questions?
And it takes no effect after January.
Yeah, like we spoke about in vacancy, we would wait till after the first of the year if that's okay with the committee and that board.
Yeah. Sheriff, can you touch on where you are at present time with vacancies on the road patrol?
Yep. We have three deputy sheriff vacancies. We have conditional offers of approval or conditional offers of employment out to them, pending polygraphs and psychologicals. The academy for them starts January 20th, so if all goes well, they would theoretically be started in the academy. But as at present time, there are three deputy sheriff vacancies.
I guess this is my point to this. I'm not... I understand where you're coming from. You're familiar with the article released by the PBA on the 22nd of October? The Finger Lakes One?
Probably. I'm not specific to the date.
So just a quote from that. It talks about short four full-time officers resulting in, and I quote, "fewer SROs, no drug investigator, coverage longer response times," was the quote. So my question to you is if that is in fact the case, why would you take somebody off the road and make them a sergeant?
Well, my expectation as a sergeant isn't off the road, and they would still be answering calls for service, backing up their officers, and handling assistant in public.
To be fair, it doesn't account for the SRO or the drug investigator, correct?
So just to be very clear on that, the SRO is a request from the Waterloo Central School District. They want a full-time school resource officer from us. I'm unable to do that at this point because we're not fully staffed, and I haven't had a conversation with the Public Safety Committee on that. We have relocated the narcotics deputy that was strictly assigned to that function back to the patrol side because we've slowly made progress, but we're at three vacancies. We were previously, we were at more. We have two in the Southern Tier Police Academy, and then two that just got released from field training that graduated from the Finger Lakes Academy. So to answer your question, I didn't write the article and I had no input on it. But yeah, the less...
You weren't asked about it? But they didn't ask you your opinion on the article?
No, sir.
Okay. Interesting.
I mean, less police officers on the street, less... The response times are going to be higher. I mean, that's just... But that's... Yeah, as far as that goes, that's where we stand. And I would imagine that's what they're relating their points to.
Well, I guess I'm just concerned if the argument is, well, slower response and all these other things, and why would you take somebody... Not we, why would you take somebody off the road and make them sergeant?
Well, I'm looking at it from both sides of the angle and trying to save taxpayer dollars.
I understand that. But it's just a question, I guess. I'm just... And, you know, so to be fair then, you're going to be back to full staff, so filling positions is... can be done. Less one position.
Yeah, as long as everything works well in their backgrounds, we would be theoretically fully staffed very soon.
So it is possible to fill shift, to fill positions?
At this time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Thank you.
Issue number three. Revised Policy 101.600, Workplace Violence Prevention and Threat Reporting.
Motion.
Suck it.
All right. You're up.
Good evening.
So this is a policy that's mandated by the Department of Labor.
Mandated, yeah.
As a municipality. So we took a look at our current policy. It was a little lacking, needed a little updating. We got with Romer, asked them to chime in on what their thoughts were, and they did so. We revised the policy, which is the policy I believe you're looking at in your packet. And we sat, we have seated the committee, and we have completed all, but I believe, two inspections. As these inspections are done by the committee, the employees, they're not done by an outside agency. So we have completed all of the inspections of our facilities. That's all facilities here covered under this at the county, except for two, which are slated for the first week of December. Just schedules were tough with everybody to get it all done before then. And that's where we're at with that.
Questions?
This puts us in with compliance, correct?
It puts us 100% in compliance. We've worked with the union. They agree it's in compliance. We're all satisfied, so I think this puts us in a good place.
Are we in full compliance with sexual harassment policy as well?
Yeah. I will say, though, that that is up... that, I mean, everybody taking that training year over year, the annual training is kept by Becky Sarnold on DHS, so I can get with her and say, you know, make sure that everybody has. But I know she sends out reminders, and she's very diligent about keeping that up, so...
I just meant more if the state made any changes that we needed to update our policy for.
No, I think our policy is 100% compliant.
Okay.
Other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? All right. Issue number four. Creating Policy Number 101.411, Public Space Designation of Seneca County Property. A motion in a second, please.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion. Questions?
Is this a brand-new policy? This is a brand-new policy.
It is a brand-new policy. Recently, Nymer came out with some best practices for municipalities and alerting the public and notifying them of non-public spaces in order to protect information that's sensitive.
Is this the First Amendment audit stuff?
There is, this is based on that.
Okay.
And so there, we took a first whack at putting together a policy, and then through some discussions, we decided we wanted something a little more clear and concise. It got a little wordy, it got a little long, Deputy County Manager, and I had a nice discussion. We decided, we reached out and we said, hey, you know, to some other counties that through my group, and they wrote back and told us what they had. And so three counties shared their resolutions with us, and we chose two of them, one of them being Ontario County, one of them being Wyoming County, and one being Rockland County. We chose two of them used the same one, and we chose that one. It was clear it was concise, and that's what you're looking at here, so that we kind of have a consistent across neighboring counties policy.
Yeah, it looks like it's just, we're not restricting, we're just restricting the areas that need to be restricted.
Correct. And we're notifying and putting sign and drop and making it very...
Yeah. Makes sense? More questions?
Is there any building modifications that's going to have a financial impact?
There are none. It will be, well, there will be signage. It will be minimal. I believe some of the signage exists at this time. What doesn't exist will be a minimal cost, and I probably can cover it in the risk.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? All right. Issue five. Amend rules of the board to schedule a year-end special board meeting.
Motion.
Second. Discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Issue six. A resolution to introduce local law seven of the year 2025 to amend local law nine of 2007 to eliminate residency requirements for the county manager position.
Motion.
Did I? Yes, we just did that.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, they did.
We are quick. All right.
I said motion.
Huh? We got motion in a second, yeah. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? All right. Issue seven. Christina Lutz, county clerk, would like to address the committee regarding new fraud alert program that the county clerk's office is using. Come on up. You can sit down.
Where do you, wherever you feel comfortable.
Have a seat.
Don't bite.
Never.
So in 2020, we put the county clerk's records online. So deeds, mortgages, discharges, all of public information is online. People are using the system. They're looking. We get a user report all the time, so we know that people are on there. The elderly are starting to get very concerned that their information is out there, which is understandable. We're a small county, so we know the notaries, we know the attorneys, but there's always that chance something could happen. So the system that we use, USlandrecords.com, has a policy called Fraud Alert. So I checked into it, and it's a free service to the public. We had this, to put the program on my system was $3,000, but under the US Land Records, I get a percentage of the people that look on our site and our records. So we had the money to pay for that. We use, I should say, we use the money that we receive, it's usually about $1,200 a month, to backscan books, to repair books, to keep the office the way it should be. So we're able to offer this service to our constituents at no cost, to them. So all they have to do, I'm going to be working on a press release along with the county manager, so that the public knows that they can go on. They have, it's a simple, I went on and tested it. You just go on and register any name that you want to put in. So if you're known as Bob or Joe, you should still do Joe or Joseph. Then anytime we put something on record, whether it be a mortgage, a deed, a judgment, you're going to get an email telling you that your name has been entered. If you didn't do it, then there's instructions to call us, and then we go from there. But I wanted you to be aware that that's one more step that we're taking to protect.
They have to sign up for that service, though, right?
Yes, they have to go to US, and it's right on when they go on USlandrecords.com and they go to Seneca County, that's the first thing that pops up on the page, and it tells them how to register.
Is that something we could put a link on the county webpage for them to do?
Yep.
Isn't that something you could set up with IT?
Yes.
I saw Rob walk.
Should be able to do that, right? Yes.
I just think you know, put it on the...
New one, maybe.
Yeah.
I mean, we can do it when we do the press release, too.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be nice to have it up there, then you could just direct them right to that link and...
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think we've got to do something because it's getting bad.
The amount of scam email that you get every day.
Right. Yep.
Telling you...
Yeah, the ones for motor vehicles. Motor vehicles will never text you.
Yeah, I know.
But that's it. I just wanted to keep you...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good going.
All right. Unfinished business. Issue one. No new positions in 2026, hiring freeze. Discussion. Let's go.
I think it feels like a quick solution. I think there's hidden costs, and there's going to be operational chokeholds, but I think it needs to be...
It's a slippery slope, but I think quite honestly, you know, what is our, the counties, the amount of positions that we have, it's probably a growth line.
I agree. I don't necessarily like the term hiring freeze because inevitably, you're going to end, the board's going to end up looking bad, because what will happen is they're going to say, oh, there's going to be a hiring freeze. And then people with mandated positions are going to come, and they're going to be like, oh, we need, you know, 911 needs a position, we have to fill that. The sheriff's office needs a position in the jail, we have to fill that. And then you're hiring people anyway, even though you have a hiring freeze. To me, the easiest solution is to address it through vacancy. You already have the system's in place.
Right.
It's just a matter of standing up and saying no.
We have three cracks to say no.
Yeah.
Vacancy, committee, and board.
Yeah, and well, and you will on all the positions if you change your policy that even...
Back to refills.
Refills have to go to the board, then you'll have three shots to kill any position coming forward, if that's the way you want to go. I just, I just don't like the term hiring freeze because inevitably, you're going to have to hire people during the hiring freeze anyway, and it just ends up looking bad. And then it's going to be like, well, you hired this one, but you won't hire this one. And just take your cracks at it through the process. I mean, it's just a matter of saying no. That's the reality. It's a matter of saying no.
It can be done internally. You just have to be diligent and really look at each position, really get that, you know, why do you need it?
I still think a hiring freeze would have a morale impact on existing employees.
You know, the other option is, you know, you could say something like a set of a hiring freeze, you could say, listen, we're not going to, we're not going to accept any new create and fills for six months. That's a realistic goal. Three months, you might as well not do it because it takes three months to put the position together anyway and get it through committees. If you want to take a stance, you could say, okay, well, we're not going to accept any create and fill positions from January 1 to June 30th. It gives you six months.
And then what happens when one of our department heads gets a grant, and the position is funded by a grant, and therefore we...
Well, I guess it's one of those things. Is it a grant that's going to make money, or is it a grant that just breaks even?
And quite honestly, whenever somebody receives a grant and creates a position, somebody in this board always asks the question. If the grant goes away, what happens to the position? Most of the time, they say if the grant money goes away, the position would go away. So CYA.
Yeah, I mean, that's what's said. I mean, I don't know how many grant positions have gone away. I really don't know. That's a Laura question. I don't know the answer to that. She's supposed to track those. So it would be interesting to know how many grants we no longer get. But you also remember, too, you know, grants are great, but they don't always come at the same percentage every year. So, I mean, there's lots of factors that come into it. But do we get a lot of grants that come with create and fills? I don't know. Or do we use a lot of the grants to cover the existing positions?
I don't know.
I mean, but that's...
Yeah, you almost have to address each situation on its own merit.
Which I think we already do with vacancy, but maybe we need to take tighter looks.
Yeah.
You have three shots at it through the process. And any board member can go to sit in on vacancy. It's not a private meeting. Any board member can sit in on vacancy and hear the discussion that goes on in there.
If you've never been in vacancy, it's, you know, it's a, we sit around a table like this, and, you know, the department head comes in, and they justify every position to us before we pass it along, ask their questions. We ask if it's, you know, grant-funded, not grant-funded, is it needed? You know, does it create overtime if you're not going to have it? Some questions are being asked, it just, I guess, I guess when it gets to here...
We don't rehash everything.
We don't rehash it because, you know, we've already, we've already done it, so... And Ernie sits on it as well, so there's three of us that are on to it.
And Frank.
And Frank, yeah, Frank. Yep, forgot Frank. Sorry, Frank.
You know, I think if you're going to do it, if the goal, is the goal to lower the budget? Is the goal to streamline the workforce? Is the goal to reevaluate positions? I mean, I don't know what the goal you want is.
Overall, it's all of those.
If the goal, if you're going to make the argument, well, we want, you know, we want to do away with X number of positions to help the county budget, the easier way to say that is to say, we want to look at payroll, and we want to take $500,000 off of payroll. Rather than say, we want to take away 10 positions, or we want to do this, the better way is to say, listen, we're going to look, and we want to trim $500,000 out of 2026 or 2020, whatever budget year you're going to be talking about, payroll, and attack it that way, because that could be four positions, that could be eight positions. And I think that's the more prudent way to look at it and say, this is our goal. Our goal is to trim county payroll by this amount. And by trimming payroll, you trim retirement, you trim benefits, you trim everything that goes along with that. And you can do that through looking at open positions. You can do that a lot of different ways. But I think if I were to do it, I would want to do it that way because now you're not, it's more, I think it's more fiscally responsible, and I think it's fair all the way across the board because you're not just saying, we're going to cut 10 positions, and whatever 10 they are, well. To me, that's just my, again, I'm not going to be here for the argument after January, but that's just something I, the way I would approach it.
Makes sense?
I think put a number to it. We want to eliminate this amount in payroll, which equals this.
We may have that discussion before January.
Maybe. And again, I welcome the discussion. The board needs to have the discussion. I mean, not to jump committees here, but the board needs to have that discussion, a real frank discussion about this. That's the reality. Okay. Thanks.
All right. Any other discussion on this? All right. Any new business? Lord Germain, Chairman?
Thank you. Next up is Public Works. If you have, if you have anybody come up to talk, could they use the microphone? Because people are having a hard time hearing that are not here. Please.
I can just put mine in.
These aren't working?
No, the people that come up to speak, they can't be... No, the, the people that come up to speak, they can't be, can't be.
Be quick tonight on this one.
Yeah?
At this time, we'll call Public Works Committee to Order. We have one item on the agenda for tonight, and that's the authorize a supplemental agreement and adjustment to the estimated expenditure for snow and ice 2025-26.
Support.
Okay, Roy, go ahead.
It's just a.
Snow and ice agreement for next year.
And this is just the estimate, correct?
Estimate, yes.
Where are we at? This is, this is for the state, for the county plowing, plowing state highways, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any questions for Roy on this? Okay. No more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Is there any old business for Public Works? Any new business for Public Works? Hearing none, Public Works is adjourned, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Next up Supervisor Cronin, Agriculture and Environmental Affairs.
Bob, you're up here too.
I've got a full staff. Need to bring my packet. I can use a table.
We have one issue up here on the Agriculture and Environmental Affairs. This is a resolution in support of Congressman Nick Langworthy's Energy Choice Act and in opposition to government mandated natural gas ban.
Support.
Second.
Any discussion?
We just did our town board and we voted it.
Yeah.
They presented 20 signatures from the town saying they, they were going the other way, we said no, anyway.
Yeah, it was the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. It mandates aggressive emissions reduction and serves as a foundation for sweeping energy restrictions, including efforts to phase out natural gas. And it's plentiful, clean energy, especially here in Central York.
Especially can't even get the electric you need for.
Yeah, you might have room for electricity. Power went off yesterday.
They have a choice of making a decision what they want to use.
Absolutely. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Both concur. Is there any unfinished business? New business? Agriculture and Environmental Affairs?
Well, we did, everyone, we talked to the, and they're going to try to get weed harvester in the canal next year. They came and inspected our launch site to see if they could launch it there by a rec center, so hopefully they're going to do the canal next year for.
Well, we have been doing the canal, it was a smaller one.
Yeah.
Well, they don't do.
Between the locks, yeah. This will be between the two locks, so.
They use the water.
Yeah, so hopefully.
Yeah, so that'd be great if they get those.
I'm in the shop working on them right now, so they'll be ready by spring.
Yeah, I met with her today, so hopefully that'll happen, so we can get our canal cleaned up.
Behind the stores or in Seneca Falls.
Very nice, yeah, so, pretty excited about that.
How's the new trailer?
They had notifications on that too, they must have something on it, but they, they're working on that too, so they'll be ready, they'll be ready by spring.
That's good.
I actually got it back, I think the trailer's still gone. Yeah, it'll be ready by spring.
Any more unfinished business? Ready to adjourn.
Thank you. Next up Supervisor Brownell, Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
I see. Yeah, you want to talk to me about it afterwards? Okay. I was, I was sleeping. Oh, I had to pull off, thanks. See, it's a broken chair, is it?
Wait down a minute.
David Call, Public Safety and Criminal Justice, meaning to order. First issue, Board of Supervisors to authorize the acceptance of a grand award in the amount of $80,000 from dormitory authority of the State of New York, Tennessee, towards purchase of body scanner for the county correctional facility.
Support.
Sure. Just point.
This is the Galahan.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we just point out Assemblyman Galahan got this grant for us under the dormitory authority of the State of New York specifically for the purchase of a body scanner for the county correctional facility.
Is 80,000 going to cover this?
No, sir. The next resolution will steer in another direction.
Yeah, I thought there's more to this.
There is.
All right.
Any questions for him? And make, make a motion?
We are.
Did it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Sheriff. Issue number two, approve purchase of intercepting whole body scanner for necessary related equipment for the Senate County Sheriff's Office.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
I just, this will be under the, under a federal contract if the committee and the board approves. We are planning to use some money out of the state forfeiture funds, which is drug, seizure funds through the district attorney's office over time. I think the, and also we're looking to use $35,000 that's left over from the 2025 budget that's currently in the patrol budget equipment line. We're going to, we want to transfer that to the jail equipment line to offset the purchase. So it'd be $35,000 out of the county budget and the remainder of the 142,000 coming from a grant and state forfeiture fund. So out of the 142, 35,000 would come out of the county, county budget.
Is there, for that, for the budget transfer, does that have to be done through resolution?
I have it in here, sir.
Is it a ways and means?
No, I have it part of this, if that's appropriate.
I just didn't know if, to do a budget transfer, if that's got to be a ways and means budget transfer? I didn't.
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, it can be.
I did run this.
I was asked, because I didn't see the ways and means, I was going to ask if you wanted it brought up as a new item in committee under ways and means to do that transfer so it doesn't take another month to make it happen.
I appreciate.
That's what I wanted to.
I did put this in here and I did have finance.
Okay.
Taking a look at this resolution.
Yeah, as long as we're good with it. I just wanted, I just wanted to make sure that we do the transfer the right way so that it doesn't delay a, a month.
Okay, thanks.
That's all. Okay.
All in favor?
All in.
Carry.
Thank you.
Authorization to county to enter a vendor agreement with Percolator Service for the public defender's office.
Support.
Motion made and seconded. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you. Let's see. Next up, Health and Human Services Supervisor Heisen.
Okay, I'll call the media order. First up is the Mental Health and Substance Abuse 2026 Agreements for Contract Services. You're up.
So every year, we contract with doctors and psychiatric nurse practitioners and clinicians for part-time work basically to provide services. These are gen, revenue generating positions and we, we ask board approval each year to contract with these providers.
Motion on that?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, get a second. Okay, any questions for Margaret? Okay, got a motion to accept it?
Yep, aye.
Well, yes, we already did that.
Yeah, we did.
Time to vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both, carry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seneca County Board of Supervisors, authorization for Division of Human Services to enter into contract in 2026.
Hello, certainly every year, there's multiple contracts that have to be approved for contract per different services, whether it's to pay for funerals or child welfare services, just multitude of agencies and contracts that we have to send out. Some, sometimes the time periods vary throughout the year. Most are all ready in the projected 2026 budget. If a contract did have to come, that's a new contract, I would, I would certainly ask for it to come before the board for approval, but every contract would need county attorney approval anyway before we entered into it. So I was just asking to give us the authority to send current contracts that are already budgeted so we can do it.
We got a motion on this?
Yeah, I'll make it one.
Second, okay. Now we can, have one more question for Mike? I don't think so. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
Next up, authorizing a contract with Veterans One Stop Center to support the Seneca County Veteran Service Agency for 2026. I don't think anybody's here. Nobody's here for that, right, Mike? For Veteran Services?
Support.
Margaret can speak.
I don't think we need anyone. Okay.
First a second, have a good.
Any questions? Anybody want to have any questions for us? Otherwise, we'll, I'll make a motion, ask you to approve it.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carry. Number four, author, authorize the acceptance of annual funding for weatherization.
Support.
Hello.
It's, it's the funding that's in the 2026 budget that we talked about. The contracts will be coming up, technically the contract year already started in July 1st, but the state's a little far behind, so that'll be coming up soon to be signed. Any actual questions?
Okay, got a motion?
Second.
Okay. I asked for a motion, not a second.
Motion.
Okay, you got a second?
I'll second.
Second, okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Thank you. Okay, number five, authorizing amendment to the environmental services fee schedule for the public health department. See, Scott, we already went over this, you and I, anybody. Anyway, the committee did.
Yeah, so, you know, the aim of this is, you know, the, the folks benefiting from our services are those that we regulate, are offsetting the costs of those services more than the taxpayer, more than the taxpayer at large and to offset a portion of our cost. Our last fee schedule update was in 2021. That was frankly a huge one because it hadn't been adjusted in well over a decade when we looked at it. This is more modest, you know, it was discussed during last week's Board of Health meeting and the Board of Health expressed support. They did ask a lot of questions, but they expressed support for this. As noted in the resolution, the Bureau of Labor Statistics indicated, you know, about 19.6% inflation since the last time we updated our fee schedule, so, you know, county costs have gone up, so have the health departments. The majority of the fee increases that you see there are in the range of about 20% to match that Bureau Labor Statistics stat. That would probably generate somewhere in the range of 11,000 to 13,000, 12,000 to 14,000 dollars in additional revenue for the environment health division within our department. And you see the current fees in the right-hand column and the, the proposed fees in the left. I would note that again, you know, we, as we did four years ago, five years ago, we reviewed and compared fees from similar counties, similar sized counties across the region and the state when we drafted this, contiguous counties as well as, you know, similar, as far as away as Allegheny. I would note that some of the plan review fees increased a little more than the 20% versus the permit fees, and that's because some of our more complex plans that we get in, say campground plans that have water, electric, sewer, campground layout, you have to apply state sanitary code, state building code, all those different things, we send those out to a contract engineer. And so we, we incur more cost for those types of things, so we did increase some of those. Yeah.
Oh, I see here the highest permit cost is for mass gatherings. Is that a family reunion or Woodstock or what?
So the state has a sanitary code that defines a mass, mass gathering. I think the number, I probably should look, it's either 5,000 or 10,000 people, yeah. Like, and we haven't had a mass, an official mass gathering in this county to my knowledge, but the thing is, if somebody proposes one, there's going to be a heck of a lot of work that goes into it.
Sure.
A lot of review as far as on our department's part and other, it's going to pull on other departments too, codes especially, but, you know, for sanitation and all your portageons, everything else, we've got to make sure all that's set and ready to go. Of course, law enforcement's going to be pulled in for traffic, et cetera, et cetera, so.
Just for all the local, like it's, it's a wonderful life and stuff like that, do they all have to pay then?
No, those, those types of things don't require a mass gathering permit. We do permit some of the temporary food vendors and things, you know, I mean, public health really touches every portion of your life, from the time you're born until we're, we all leave this world, whether you realize that, you know, providing, you know, making sure the food you eat is safe, making sure the water you drink is safe, that type of thing. So, you know, we do permit temporary food vendors, mobile food vendors at, at events like that, but not the event itself.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, got a motion on this?
Can I make a motion?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Number six, approving the purchase of one 2026 Chevy Trax for the public health department and approving amendment to the 25 public health budget to support that purchase.
Support. Second.
So our department has three vehicles, of course, we're over in the other building over there, we use all three every day. One of those is a 2017 Nissan Altima that's coming up on 10 years old, doesn't owe us anything, it's been a good vehicle, but I was going to propose replacing it in either '26 or '27, probably '20, '27 if it would go that long, but we're, we're also of course actively recruiting for a speech language therapist and a physical therapist. Whenever those positions either won or failed, those people are going to be out in the field 230, 200 to 250 days a year providing services in the home, so we're going to need another vehicle at that point in time. So when I discussed this with Deputy County Manager and Finance Director, they said, you know, they suggested if I had funds in my budget this year, might be more, they, they recommended that I perhaps look into moving this forward this year. So I did find some funds in our early intervention transportation budget that could be transferred, and so that's what I proposed using. I would note that this 22980 costs, we do get state aid on that, so 36% state aid when you apply that, it gets it down to 14.7. So then, you know, if that vehicle lasts seven years or so, seven, eight years, you're looking at two grand a year or less for the, for the purchase of the vehicle spread out over that time.
Support.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
Any new business or old business? Then we're adjourned.
Thank you. We're going to Ways and Means next, Supervisor Parte. He's supposed to be.
Okay, I'm going to call the Ways and Means Committee to order. First issue, authorizing the amendments to the 2025 Seneca County budget. Page 42.
Motion. Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Issue number two, authorizing the Finance Department to pay the mortgage tax.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Issue number three, authorization to initiate development of a new official website for Seneca County.
Motion. Second.
Rob, hi.
Hi. How are you doing tonight? We evaluated three different vendors for a website, Civic Plus, Revise, and Granicus, and we chose Civic Plus. They're used through quite a few counties through the state, Yates County, Cayuga County, Steubin, Chumong, Schuyler, Wyoming, Livingston, Ontario, and Madison use them. They seem to be a pretty good company, and these other counties are happy with them.
Any questions for Rob? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Moving on to unfinished business, just ongoing discussion regarding the 2026 budget. Anybody have any changes that they want to propose as of now? We are going to call a special Ways and Means Committee on December 9th before our board meeting. Two weeks.
That's the night of the board meeting?
Tonight of the board meeting. Did we pick a time? Is there a time? Not yet. Okay.
Have you had any ideas where any cuts could come from?
Me personally, no. Honestly, when I look at it, if, what is it, 24 taxing districts in Seneca County, if you cover the county, 10 towns, four villages, and nine school districts, we are the, there's only four municipalities or school districts, none of the school districts, never mind, that are less than the county tax rate. So out of 24, we're, and tire doesn't count, so really, there's only three municipalities that have a lower tax rate than the county, and the county provides way more services. So I do think that's something to consider, and I look at our historical tax rate from 20 years ago.
Well, when we discussed this a little earlier, the town that I represent has a large population of seniors that live on fixed incomes. So any increases, no matter what percentage you can tie it to. Makes it difficult for these folks to come up with the dollars.
I mean, if you live in the Village of Waterloo in 2025, your tax rate was almost $20 per thousand, so.
That was the village.
That was the village.
Yeah. Well, a lot of them lived in the village.
Down to 5%?
4.85.
Okay, I don't think that's too bad for.
I mean, I know it's a huge increase. I'm not arguing. If you could show me something that we can cut, because I feel like we've gone through the budget quite a bit. I do know there's open positions, and that certainly, obviously, can be talked about, but I think that has to be looked at strategically. I don't think you can cut it off. That's me. What do you got? What do you want to propose?
Yeah, well, you know, that's the tough part of it. I mean, I honestly think most of the departments did a very good job on their budgets. I mean, if you look at the increase, it's mandate, it's salary, it's fringe, it's personnel.
Retirement, retirement.
It's personnel. That is the bottom line. Nobody wants to say it, but that is the bottom line. The biggest increase is personnel-related, so that discussion, if you really want to trim the budget, has to do with personnel. That's the bottom line. Nobody wants to really have that, you know, say it, but I'll say it. So there it is.
Agree with you.
Back to the earlier discussion, you know, I don't know what the right approach is. You know, I gave my two cents on it, but, you know, again, it's something you're going to have to take up and figure out how you want to do it.
But cutting a million dollars is still only 25%.
No, no, I understand that. But, I mean, yes, yes. And again, you know, I think you have to approach it from, what is the target? What do we want to get at? Not just slash this, cut this. You've got to have a target. You've got to say, this is where we want to be, and work at it that way. I guess with that said, my question, and I don't know how we want to address this, is my fear is that we're going to leave here tonight, and then we're going to come to the board meeting on the 9th, and there's going to be last-minute things thrown out there on the budget, that nobody's going to have a chance to look at, talk about, digest, and then we've got to vote on it, which is a tough thing to do. I am asking the board members, if you have ideas, please share them before that. We need a chance to look at them. If you just drop it on the board that night, and nobody has a chance to think about it, talk about it, we're not doing anybody any favors. And to me, it's just not very fair to do that, because what's going to happen is, it's going to get into this debate of yes, no, and then the budget gets voted no, and then it goes back to what we have anyway.
Right.
So if you really have thoughtful cuts, I implore you to put them out there ahead of time, so that we can have time, and I say we, the board, you know, the county manager, everybody can have time to look at this and digest it and have a real conversation about it prior to voting. I think that's only fair.
I completely agree.
Yeah.
But I could also, tell me if I'm wrong, someone up there could call a special meeting before December 9th if we really wanted to go and propose changes.
I don't think I could make the 9th.
You're not going to be here at the board meeting?
I'm not sure.
Okay.
On the 9th.
But I agree, and going back to what Supervisor Reinhart suggested.
Right, I completely agree.
I think it would be better to have the Ways and Means Committee meeting a week earlier. And whether we have any ideas or not, and just ask everyone, including department heads, do you have any ideas? Do you see anything we can trim? Can we save dollars anyplace?
You know, because even if you said, well, we're going to eliminate 10 positions, without knowing what those 10 positions are, you can't put a number to it. You don't know what it even means. So that's why I'm saying, let's, you know, if we're going to do it, you know, now is the time, and you've got to act, and so when we show up on the 9th ahead of time, people can get these, and they can have the real numbers. We're not going to Julie and say, and having her in the back corner with her calculator trying to figure this out. We have real numbers.
Yeah, that's unfair.
Right.
How many positions would you have to eliminate?
Well, I mean, if that's the way you want to go, I mean, maybe.
What do you want to get to, so you know how many?
What's the target?
Yeah.
What's the target you want to get to? I don't know. I don't know that number.
Have you handed out the budget yet to the board?
I believe it's, I mean, I have it, it was in the email.
It's on the website.
Yeah, yeah. It was in an email dated.
You don't hand them out paper anymore?
It's like 300 or 400 pages. You want 300 or 400 pages?
Sure not going to print 300, 400 pages on my laptop.
Came out 11 sets.
In the old days, we used to hand out the budget, and it'd be stacked up there on the table forever.
I believe there's some printed copies somewhere around here.
I mean, I have a printed copy.
We didn't get it down to last year.
Yeah, they got them.
I don't think that you're getting it down to that. I don't know. That's a feasible, I don't know if.
We went from like.
I thought it was more than this.
No.
No, no. Last year, we went, we went from about close to 15%, and we cut it down to not, just a touch under 10%.
But I think.
Well, now you're only 4.85.
No, it's not a percent, that's the dollar. That's the dollar, not percent.
Not percent.
That's a dollar per thousand.
See, I think to be fair, I mean, the percent is deceiving. When you talk percentages, it gets very deceiving. I mean, you know, we batted this around several times. I mean, the reality is, the budget is 6-point-some-million, quote me, 6-point-some-million higher than it was last year. We already know from the meetings ahead of this, that's 90% of that is salary benefits, whatever. So, you know, that's where you are. So get away from the percentages and say, you know, we want it to go 5% or whatever, and come up with a real number. That's how you have to work. You have to come up with a real number. But that's the way I think.
Thank you.
Do you want me to call a meeting?
I think it's only fair. I just don't want to come here on the 9th, and we could bat it around a committee ahead of time, and it's still not fair, because then the other board members do not have a chance to look at this and offer suggestions or, you know, this is a big deal. This is one of the biggest votes you have all year. It's a big deal. I mean, you want to be informed when you make this vote, and you don't want it to be rushed and try to make last-minute modifications that you don't really understand what's going to happen. That's my opinion.
Any other discussion?
I'm in agreement with that, and that's why I'd like to see a meeting earlier than the 9th, to come up with any kind of proposed cuts, trims, whatever.
I mean, I think to be fair, if we could come up with a date a week before, sometime within a week before the board meeting, so I think that's a fair time for Julie to put numbers together, to get it to the board members, to be informed to vote on the 9th.
And how much time are you going to allow for us to have that special meeting? An hour? And you're going to get nothing done anyway, so.
I don't send it.
You need a half an afternoon.
No, we just set a time and go from there.
Right.
And I would encourage all the board members that can show up to show up.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Supervisor Parte. So we had a budget workshop for the board. We had a budget workshop. The people that wanted to show up, showed up or didn't show up. We're in the same boat we were last year. This body was elected by the people for the people, and nobody wants to say they want to make the hard decisions, they want to pass it back to the deputy county manager or the department heads. We're elected by the people to make those decisions. If you're not happy with the number in the budget, then say you want $10 million cut off, and do it. I don't know why everybody has to go back and forth about this. It's simple. If you're not happy with the number, you have to tell the deputy county manager, the finance director, cut X number of dollars off. You want to lay people off, you have to do that. I mean, you can have 20 meetings between now and the time we have to adopt the budget. I mean, this is insanity what we're doing here. You have to say, if you're not happy with the number, and like Supervisor Shipley's saying, I mean, last year in the 11th hour, something got thrown on the table. Say what you want. If you're not, if we're not going to be happy with it, why are we going to go wasting all this time? Just say, listen, take $5 million off the budget. Say it now. What the hell are we waiting for? I don't understand it.
I think, to be fair, and I understand your point, I'm not disagreeing with you, my concern is that we don't get it dropped on us at the 11th hour.
Right.
Now, I understand we can have all the meetings we want, it doesn't mean it's not going to happen. My point is that if we can, as a collective body, have the conversation before the 9th, so that we don't come in here on the 9th, and then somebody make an amendment to the budget to cut $5 million with no idea where that money's going to come from, and it passes, then what?
But we're going to be there. Even if you have a special meeting, we're going to still be there.
I understand, but don't you agree that it's more prudent that if we're going to do this, if the majority of the board, and I don't know if this is where it is, wants to cut some more of the budget, I'm not saying that's the case, but it needs to be done prior to walking in on the 9th. You've got to have a discussion, you've got to have an idea of where it's coming from. You can't, I disagree that you could just say, cut $5 million. Well, where's it coming from?
But here's the problem, we need to give them a direction, which way to go. We didn't do that last year, and we're not doing it now. We have to give them a direction to cut somewhere, and the biggest expense here is personnel.
Understandable. But if we did that on the 9th, so if we came in on the 9th and that motion's made on the floor, we're going to cut $5 million out of the budget, it's going to come from personnel, at what point and where does, what personnel line item does that come from at that time? Because you've got to file the budget. Where's it coming from?
I don't dispute that.
I mean, Supervisor Reinhart, cut $5 million tonight?
Supervisor Parte.
You know what I'm saying? Yeah, I mean, you could bring that up.
Really happy with what you've done.
That was just the introduction to the.
I mean, it's not Supervisor. I don't think that's necessarily a committee decision right now to make that we want to say, we want to cut five. I mean.
I don't have a number.
I couldn't give you a number. I think, you know, and again, to say, I don't know what it means. I mean, I'm not necessarily in favor of laying people off or cutting positions. I mean, I think there's an argument to be made about not filling positions. I think that's an argument. I think, you know, Supervisor Trout makes a valid point when he talks about where we are as far as what we pay, and there's all those things. My only point to this, and not to get into this big discussion today, is that I just don't want to get it dumped on us five minutes before we have to vote.
Chairwoman.
Supervisor Trout.
To the chairman's point, isn't, I mean, look, we had scheduled that workshop on that Friday. I took time off. I was here. We worked on it. I looked at the budget ahead of time. If anyone had issues with the budget, they should have been brought up then. I mean, do your job. I mean, this is way late in the time to be trying to change the budget, in my opinion. And guess what? I haven't had one person call to complain about what we proposed, not one. And it's a fair point.
How many people are aware of everything, though? I mean, quite honestly, the budget, when was that put up on the website?
Two weeks ago.
What day was it?
The day it was filed.
It was up on the website?
The 17th.
Well, I think it's just that Supervisor Reinhart makes a good point that if we're going to have changes, we need time to kind of figure out what the repercussions of those changes are going to be, and that boat has sailed, in my opinion.
And that's, I guess that's the point I'm trying to make. Not that I'm saying we want, I want to cut this, but that is what I'm saying. I'm saying, from being here for four years, I know that, you know, this is the way things can happen, where we get it dumped on in the last minute, and.
I agree.
I'm trying to avoid that.
I'm just saying before now, and if you have it December 2nd, December 3rd, whatever, you have to give them a direction to go. If you're not happy with the number, and that's the thing, we're not doing that. We need to do that. And that's the thing, we were elected to do those hard decisions that nobody else wants to do. If that's really what we want to do, we have to give a direction. That's what my point is. We're not giving that direction, and I don't believe we haven't had the opportunity to do so. We have. We're not doing it. That's the point I'm trying to make. I'm not trying to say anything you're saying is wrong, but we're not doing that. If we're not going to, if Supervisor Shipley doesn't want to pass that number, say something now. What do you want to do? What number would you be happy with? What would you live with?
Or here's an idea, just vote against it when it comes up.
What number would this board be happy with? Is there a number? Is there no number?
Flat taxes.
What is it? What is that? I mean, we're here, what is it? What would you guys be okay, what would everybody be okay with going home and could sleep at night? What is it? It's not my committee meeting. I'm just hijacking it, sorry.
No, I, not that I'm happy where it is, but I think we've done everything we can. So I don't have a number to propose, because I don't think there is a number to propose.
I don't think anybody does. You've worked hard, you got it to where it is, and it's, you're not going to cut much more unless you do, get rid of a bunch of people.
Supervisor Letini.
Yes. Similar to this position that we're talking about now, why is it that the towns, we have to be within the governor's tax cap?
We do. We passed local law authorizing us to be outside of the tax cap.
Right. But the goal is to be within it, to maintain affordable living for constituents. So that's the goal in a town hall. And why shouldn't that be our goal? For us, it's 2%.
Be my goal. Wait a minute.
Hold on, let me finish. I went to the budget meeting, too. The point is, if we are told by the state of New York that our cap is 2%, why is it okay for the county to run 6 or 10 or 12? And I'm not saying it's good or bad. I'm just asking the question. It seems like the townships are held to one standard, and the county, at least from perception, the county's not. We all try to keep it as low as possible. Agreed. But it doesn't seem to be that. When was the last time we had a 2% budget?
Well, actually, yeah. If you looked, you were here for the presentation, the gap between the percent increase in appropriations and the percent increase in the tax levy. We've got to close that gap. We spent two decades keeping it flat or lowering it year after year after year. That's why we're in this position.
If the state keeps it at 2%, that's great if they would stop raising their mandates more than 2%.
Agreed. No, we all agree.
And not for nothing, the inflation rate is more than 2%. The 2% tax levy cap is more of a suggestion. Each town can override it. We've had to override ours because, like the county, we used reserves and we didn't properly fund the functions that we had to fund. And, you know, to think that 2%, that's ridiculous. You name anything that's at 2%. I bet you your wages go up by more than 2%.
Well, insurance went up 18%.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's ridiculous, and it's something Governor Cuomo put in to get votes. That's it.
Do you have a suggestion?
No. I just wanted to understand the history of why we're not at 2% when in a town hall, at least in a town we do.
Luke, isn't that somewhat disingenuous? You have the highest tax rate of any town in the county. So it's easy to say 2%. Your 2% might be my 20%. That's not fair.
It's the same as Ovid. It's the same as Romulus.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. And it's a correction factor. So it equalizes out. That's why it's called the equalization rate.
If you look at what we were given as equalization rates, it doesn't equal out. It's not the same.
It is. And it's the same as Ovid. And it's the same as Romulus. Look at the list.
So I guess where we are back in committee, I'll kick it, I guess. I want to kick it back a bob a little bit because you were the one who voted no on the budget. So you're the one who's struggling with the number, and I understand that. I guess, what do you want to do?
Well, New York State is raising our Medicaid payment in March, and that's half a lot more than 2%. Half a million dollars. But they don't have a problem in saying, "All the counties, keep it under 2%. But we're going to raise..." New York State, we pay more Medicaid than the state of Florida and Texas combined. They need to streamline that plan. I mean, they supposedly capped it for us a few years ago, but it's not following a cap. We're going to go from $114,000 a week to $125,000 a week come March. So, I mean, yes, that's in the budget. That's why the numbers are so big.
So how do you think we're going to lower anything from where you are? You've cut down, I think, in a pretty good sensible position.
Yeah, I mean, realistically.
So how do we?
There's only two places.
How do we do anything different?
Take the $500,000 out of capital and promote, I think, is a mistake. Or you cut payroll. Those are your options.
Yeah.
That's it.
Agreed.
What'd you say? I couldn't hear you, Mike.
I said, looking at the budget, the only way I could see you could cut theoretically would be you could take that $500,000 set aside for the capital improvement, which I think would be a huge mistake because it's going to cost you more down the road, or you cut your salary line items. That's really the only way you're going to cut. We could say, oh, we're going to cut overtime, but that never seems to work. You know, we could say we're going to cut equipment. But at the grand scheme of things, even if you cut equipment, what dollar amount are you going to get down to? Even if, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add that capital improvement also has funding in there for a roof, new roof. Not necessarily just new buildings. It's also keeping our current infrastructure up to date.
Justice Supervisor Reinhardt's point. If someone has an idea.
Let's hear it.
Don't bring it to us on the ninth. I don't need to schedule a separate meeting if we don't need it. Because there's no point in having a meeting if nobody's got any ideas. But if you have an idea, reach out.
You can't solve anything tonight, and you won't on the ninth.
Well, I just, like, back to, not to belate, but I just don't want to get dropped down at the 9th hour and then have no time to think about this.
I don't think any of us do.
None of the negotiations that are ongoing are in this budget either.
Right.
So that's money that's not there. That's another hurdle we're going to have to get into.
I just had one question. I got to find my stuff again. I'm sorry. Hang on. And this is just more of a clarification. I think it was something that got misplaced. I was just kind of curious since we're in Ways and Means. I don't know, Melissa, if you could answer this. Under line item, it's 103114-512000. It was in the sheriff CID part-time. I guess there was a large number in there. I don't know if that was a, the number was moved somewhere? There was a jump in there. There was $128,000 in that line item. And I was just kind of curious. I think it was, like, the number got maybe transposed somewhere else. That's, I'm just curious. And I don't need to know right now. If that's just something you could just, like I say, my guess is it got transposed somewhere.
Any other unfinished business or discussion on this? Any new business? We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Who's next now?
We could do an economic development next, or what?
We are. We are. Be patient, Supervisor Shipley. We had to wait for Supervisor Jeffrey Trout to join us.
I see that.
Now I got to find it. What page is it on?
Okay. Economic Development is on page 38. That's where it starts and goes to page 40.
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Okay. You calm down yet?
Yeah. I know, I should have just stayed. Negotiation.
No wonder you're wound up.
I know. We didn't, we didn't, we were close to settling, and we didn't. Jesus.
38.
38 to 40.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll call this meeting of the Economic Development, Tourism, Housing Committee to order. The first issue is authorizing issuance of a request for proposals for a qualified community planning firm.
Motion.
Second.
And this is to help out with the Ovid area?
Right. Well, this is the particular grant we applied for with them in mind. Are there any questions?
We got the grant.
Yes.
How much was it for?
50? 50,000.
50,000, right here.
It's in the budget. It's in the, it's in there. It is. Any other questions?
So that's matching. You always ask if you can ever.
Yes. It's a $100,000 project in the pot.
And I know they do have, Ovid has been, I don't know, this will go to them, but I'm just saying they have, the LDC that they put together is actually making some very good progress. They've got some good folks on there. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Next issue, Board of Supervisors establishes the 2026 funding appropriation for the TPA, the Seneca County Chamber of Commerce.
Motion.
Motion? Is there a second?
That's a contract we have, so.
So.
Second.
Is there, there is a second? Are there questions, concerns? Go ahead, Luke.
A question. So it says, "Actual revenue for the four quarters, a period from October 1st to 2024 to September 30th, is $787,400." Above it, it's saying the annual appropriation for TPA funding is derived from the past four calendar quarters of known revenue. What is the revenue? What is the known revenue? How's that defined?
I think that is the known revenue.
Is that the 787?
Yes, that's the amount. But how's it defined?
Occupancy tax.
So that's what comes in through occupancy? Okay. And then, okay.
And it's not just a straight 85% of what comes in because we have expenses that comes out of it from the treasurer's office. That comes out first.
After deducting, yeah.
Yeah. And then we have the other funds that we use to.
Other 10%.
Fund locals.
You read my mind. How's it calculated?
Yeah. The 635, Luke?
Yeah, I see that's the final sum.
Gotcha.
The mechanics and the formula.
Gotcha.
He's saying the administrative overhead is removed.
First.
Probably some additional.
Another 10%, which Bob said we use to fund other things.
Yep. And then back, the rest goes to the chamber. Okay.
Bob, did you have a question, or?
I was going to hurt, I couldn't hear Luke.
Oh, okay.
He's pretty loud. Wants to make sure you hear him.
Any other questions? All of them? Yes, go ahead.
A few years ago, when the chamber was trying to get an agreement for more than one year, they told us that they would be happy at $350,000 a year if we could guarantee it. But it's in, you know, the law says that we can promise somebody else's, some other board or future money.
Right. Do you know what year that was? I think that's before our time.
Yeah.
Do you know what the year that was?
It goes back a while.
Tom Murray was president.
About four, five years ago.
Yeah, four or five. And I'm just wondering, you know, I know they're doing a good job. Facts that speak for themselves on hits and all this stuff. But I'm wondering if there should be some talk about capping this at some point, you know. Does it cost a million dollars to run the same website they wanted to run for $350?
Luke, do you have a?
I think Supervisor brings up a good portion, a good point. And maybe we add into the formula a performance factor, sort of year-to-year improvement because that's what we really want to push in our advertising. Basically, we pay for performance, or we modify the formula such that that's the case. So it doesn't just, it's not a blind 85%.
But you're not thinking about, you're thinking about that for next year?
Yes.
To give us time?
Yes. So not now.
I think, I mean, just, so I think that's interesting, and I think one thing we would want to do is maybe give the chamber a heads up that we were thinking of changing their formula for the following year.
Because in essence, the more they generate, the more revenue they get. I mean, that's a function. But at some point, you know, they're over 635,000. That's a pretty good chunk. I think last year it was 500,000, if I remember correctly, roughly. So that's a, that's a pretty good increase. So anyways.
That's probably why they hired the, that firm to come in and evaluate everything they do, which is, if you, if you ever, you ever go onto a SCOTC meeting?
No.
SCOTC's the one that approves the chamber's proposal that we, that they submit to the county.
Bob, you don't know when that report is due? The outside third-party agency they hired to evaluate.
Well, they, they had them at the SCOTC meeting. That was, what, a month and a half, two months ago?
Okay.
So it's an ongoing thing.
Actually, we should get an update on that, and we should also get an update on what's going on with the building. I haven't heard a word about that in quite some time.
Yeah. Been delayed.
I'll, I don't mind. I'll contact Jeff tomorrow and text or email him.
Something, something else to possibly consider? Maybe it's a bad idea. I don't know.
Go ahead.
Is LDC funding coming from occupancy tax as well?
That makes sense. I could see where that would be funding. Is the LDC funded at all in the budget?
No. From the money that we gave them through ARPA. We gave them ARPA money, and then did the.
There's no continuation in funding. Everything they got, there's nothing planned. There's nothing laid out right now.
We didn't put, I thought we were going to put 50,000 towards it or not.
Yeah, it's not in there right now.
The money from gross Seneca, was that, was that going to end up going to the LDC to do the same?
It hasn't yet, but that was the plan, yeah.
That's what's planned to use that. That's good.
Well, I mean, I think it's.
I have a, I have a question about the LDC that I'll bring up after we finish this.
I think it, and it's also, it's good perspective to think about, you know, it's not going back to the previous conversation at Ways and Means in terms of the budget. It's like, a lot of things aren't being funded or have already been reduced. And that's kind of something to keep in mind when we think about potentially reducing the budget even further. Is it, you know, it's not like it's full of, you know, gimmies. In fact, it has been slimmed down significantly. Okay. So this question is on the, on the floor. Any other questions or concerns? All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay. Other issues to come before the committee?
Under new business?
Sorry, I'm sorry. I skipped, no, well, that's for Ways and Means. Yep, go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. I went to the LDC meeting last week, and I thought that was a very good meeting. And my question is, who does economic development for Seneca County? The answer is somewhere in, there's quite a few different departments, and I'm not sure where everything runs together. But the LDC questions brought up a lot of thoughts.
Yes.
And I would say, after the first of the year, we ought to consider sitting down with the Board of Supervisors, not at a regular board meeting, at a special time, and set up a meeting between the LDC, the Board of Supervisors, our planning committee, and the Chamber of Commerce. And kind of, so we can get, Luke?
So Bob, have you been reading my notes or listening to Supervisor Partee? Because actually, I don't know if I'm chair of the committee next year. That is exactly my plan. In fact, we've had a number of.
And this is after talking to the LDC Thursday night?
I too.
And what is your official duties?
Right.
And.
And in fact.
And they're kind of overlapping what's, the IDA, too, and the IDA.
So in fact, and, and something that Supervisor Partee and Chairman and I have talked about, especially after visiting and seeing what other counties do. Roughly, I think I would like to have a conversation, start with the committee, about, you know, is there a way to reorganize and more efficiently use dollars between, uh, let's just say, planning, economic development, um, chamber, IDA, and LDC? Is there, because there are some really, and I give Supervisor Partee a ton of credit.
And all we gotta do is kind of line them up.
When she chaired this committee, she in fact had, and reached out and received a number of models that would probably work better for us, and that's something I think we could pursue more strongly next year. And we've actually even had some conversations, for example, with the Chair of the IDA and some others, so, yep. It's a good idea.
Well, it was, seemed obvious.
Yeah.
After meeting with the LDC, because I kind of asked them, exactly what are you gonna do?
Yeah, I think it's good.
And, and there was a great article in last Thursday's Finger Lakes Times. I, I hope all of you got a chance to read that.
Wasn't about public hearings, was it? No.
No, it was about, it was about a sit-down.
Yes, I.
With the LDC Director.
Yeah, I, I too enjoyed my time sitting with them and giving them a kind of perspective. So any, I don't, go ahead.
Just as a follow-up, um, so if we, if we do cap, right, let's say in 2027's budget, we do cap the chamber's income, we will have to have clearly a pay-for-performance, some other modifier in their formula. Is that something we put in like the, on the agenda for Q1, Q2?
I, I.
So there's enough time to have that.
I would say at least by quarter two, in fact, I know, um, when we've talked about it in the past, or at least, you know, it's always too late, like now, right now, it's just too late that, to do that, but I think it's a conversation, yes. So don't, I mean, we don't know what the committee assignments will be, but let's try to keep that on the agenda, yep.
Yes, and that revenue could help offset some of our.
Right, well, and even a whole restructuring of it, which, quite frankly, we have a lot to say in because we have the power of the purse with most of those organizations.
Unfortunately, most of them are, all their funding.
Yeah, I get it.
Gonna be set at last year's.
Right.
So, I'm sure they won't be.
You just gotta start sometime.
Happy about that.
Yeah, you just gotta start sometime.
So, December ninth, be prepared.
Yep. Huh? Okay. December ninth, be prepared for.
When, when those, the groups of, of nonprofits that we fund. Come in and, I mean, that happened last year.
Right, but we, we didn't cut, we just froze. Okay, all right.
We did that last year, and we.
Right, right.
Got quite a bit, quite a bit of backlash also.
I'll bet you we don't this year, but.
Who knows?
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't remember the back question this year. I don't remember anybody, so I don't recall what person this week came up with the question last year.
Well, I do, I mean, maybe because I sat right next to the podium. But, uh, you know, uh, Cornell Coa.
I think he came before.
Yeah, they came before, yeah.
That didn't come in the actual public hearing, he came before.
I think what Supervisor Shipley is referring to, when there was rumors they may have cuts.
Yes.
Which they did not get. That's why there was an artificial hype for no reason, but there was an artificial hype.
Imagine that happens.
Okay, anything else?
No, I, I said my piece.
Any other new business? Okay, uh, committee stands adjourned, thank you.
Okay, next up is Water Sewer Treatment Management Operations Supervisor Reynolds, you're getting the chair of this one tonight, because you're next in the line.
Where were you, did I have an illegal meeting someplace?
Okay, we will call Water Sewer Treatment Management Operations Committee together.
Number one, uh, accepting bid for operation maintenance of the New York State.
So moved.
Three eighteen, four fourteen municipal sewer system.
Yeah, so.
We gotta have a second.
Second, second.
First and second, we can discuss.
Yeah, so the county's gonna take over operation and maintenance of the three, uh, three eighteen, four fourteen lines. Uh, we went out, uh, we advertised this publicly, we'd hoped to get multiple bids, we received a single bid, uh, and, from Coaster, and so, uh, I think this is sort of our only choice, but, you know, they, they were recommended by Wendell Engineering. They do, they did do a similar service, uh, agreement, uh, for another account, another town, so I think, uh, we should, they should be able to do this.
Are these bids in, in line, kind of what you were expecting?
You know, that's one of the tough things with this, there's, there's not a lot of information to compare this to, you know, so, you know, unfortunately, really, the only costs that, that I have are the proposed costs that were generated in 2019, and they were supposed to have been updated, but they were not. Uh, so I can look at sort of, I can, I can compare this num, or, yeah, I think this is sort of in line where I thought it was gonna be.
Okay.
But it is hard to compare it to anything, unfortunately.
Do they have any money to pay for this going forward?
So, I mean, this is sewer district three and four, and so I think, you know, rates would have to be adjusted perhaps to accommodate this price.
Do they have any fund balance built up?
Uh, there are fund balances, uh, for these two districts, I, I don't know the fund balances off the top of my head.
Mike, can I ask you a quick question? I know it's not a committee, but it, it references, it says maintenance agreement. My question is, is this, if something breaks, they're gonna come and fix it under these numbers, or is that gonna be an additional fee?
So, the main thing, so the, the, the only hard number there are the two weekly visits, beyond that, those are projections, and so they are responsible, they're expected to have all the necessary parts and pieces to do the necessary repairs when they're there. If there are emergency repairs, or sort of, you know, not a standard visit repair, then that falls into those other three lines.
So this is like setting a maximum amount under normal conditions?
This is a maximum amount.
Sort of, should cover it.
Should cover it.
Go ahead, Frank. Excuse me?
So, I mean, mostly it's gonna be a visual examination to see what's going on. In the actual RFP, there's a line, which I don't have, uh, in my hands, but it lays out all the items that are expected to be done, you know, there are certain items that are done quarterly, there are things that are as needed or upon visiting. Yes. So it's all the standard maintenance, you know, set by the manufacturers.
How much does Seneca Falls charge every year?
I'm not really sure, uh, that was one of the things, you know, the exchange of money never really, you know, it never really worked, that's why we sort of are at where we're at.
It's a lot cheaper than that?
Yeah, man, we've been there five days, we went out there every day, we spilt plowings, we mowed them all, and all that, I don't know if that excluded, are they gonna plow them out?
No, and so, I mean, it was, it was not, it was not, you know, it was not my, the county's decision to end the agreement, it was, you know, it was not, there was not a good relationship.
Come up with a payment plan, I mean, you couldn't figure out what, when we ever were gonna get paid to get old, and then we'd tell them, we owe money, and it's so crazy, and nobody could come up with a formula of how, how Seneca Falls would get paid.
So Frank, is Seneca Falls willing to like respond to the RFP, or? I mean, cause it is a lot of money.
Yeah, so, I mean, since I, since I took this position, this was one of the first things I tried to work out, and got, you know, really nowhere. And so, I mean, it was sort of numbers and tables and, you know, really thought, really had hoped to try to get, you know, some of those things filled in, but yeah, absolutely.
So I think, I mean, and maybe.
It's also been a fee, that's where we get, and that we pay, too, it's not like this is it, where we get, it goes through the line, we meter, you have to pay fee, too, for that.
Yeah, well, that's, that should be an, an, be a no-brainer.
Yeah, this is just the O and M piece, so there.
But I think you're gonna find the problem, like, so right now, when you charge people for sewer, you charge them by how much water they use, but we're not, we don't care how much water you use, we gotta meter. Now, all this rainwater that's getting in the sewer system, you guys are gonna pay for it, yeah, because there's no way for us to spend that. We know, like, at Alamo, when it rains, they get a lot, their pumps run a lot, you know, but it's just, so, I think, we gotta find out if this is not really true.
And I think maybe to Bob's point, like, if we don't know what the fund balances are, we don't know what impact this will have on the rate, that makes it kind of hard to send on to the full board if we don't know those things, does that make sense, or?
And when, when are you done, by the end of the year, you're done?
Yeah, December, we expect when you're booked, you're supposed to go on to July, or?
Uh, I think it was May.
We gave you guys a lecture five, six months because you weren't ready, but, yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
Although, you know, one of the, one of the things is, is we still don't know the disparity between what is billed for and what that meter will read, so, you know, I had asked that number, and, you know, never received it.
Who? That's my red.
Remember saying, we owe money, that's like, it was just a lost run, I mean, like I said, I sent a guy out there every day, and I do all the pumping, now they check them, they mow them, they follow them, they keep luck, they draw services, so, I don't know.
Help. I'm just wondering, who would be the oversight for this company, and all the people in it, say, well, you know, we spent ten hours fixing this pump, you know?
It would be the county, you guys, county owns it.
County owns it.
You have to get some oversight, you can't give them a blank check.
I assume it's.
Yeah, so they have to give quarterly, uh, work reports with photographs, uh, any expenditure for parts has to be approved by the county.
Well, you're, you're, you're in charge of it though, right?
Yes, so again, once ownership is handed over to the county, Seneca Falls only receives it at a meter just north of the landfill, and so they no longer have responsibility for it.
And this was all worked out with Dave Etnman, you know, we all, the next, next number of dollars put aside every year for, for a fund balance, for repairs and everything else, so, and I kept asking for it, but they never, you never sent them any money, or nobody knew what it was, I'm not blaming you on that, but.
We went a long time without giving dollars, it's not gonna be too much, it was like, you know, I'm paying people, I got a budget, too, and you're gonna pay people out there, and not getting any money, and it's, they couldn't go up with a formula, and it's, I don't care.
Is it, Frank, would, would Seneca Falls be willing to send us a formula as a proposal?
I, I'll, I will talk to my, my water superintendent as well.
Okay. Next week, yeah, I get it, yeah, next week.
So did they send, did you send them a, a bid package?
Who's that?
What?
Who, did I send it to whom?
To Seneca Falls.
I, I. Yeah, so, because they, because they asked to end the agreement, it did not seem like I would send them the package, so they had already expressed that they were not interested in continuing to do this service, although now it sort of sounds like they sort of are. And really, it wasn't a matter of not being able to figure out a formula, there was just never money exchanged, and so right now, Seneca Falls receives all of the money, and the county gets zero of the money.
Well, you, you're supposed to be getting a, a piece, a percentage of it for fund balance for future repairs, but that never happened.
People get hooked up, like, stuck in doors, and then, because we don't know that, water, water, if we don't find out, we're not getting any money, like, somebody's placed, we're there for months, and no sewer tax at all, but we have to pay for it, we get, and it comes through our thing, it's free.
Yeah, I would just say, unfortunately, this is something that I think goes back to COVID, so the agreement, you know, the draft was in 2019, the time that it was supposed to be revisited and actual numbers put in, you know, was that spring of 2020? And so, actual numbers weren't put in, and then it just sort of, you know, scattered from there.
So you got any idea at all how much fund balance we have in that, or were, say, where'd the fund balance come from? If, if Seneca Falls never sent us any fund balance money, what do, what do we have?
I, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Would seem appropriate to table this.
Do we really have to act on this soon?
I mean, we need to have this contract in place by January first, so.
The clock's ticking, December 31st is not going away, that's all I got to say.
This is like, okay, so.
Seneca Falls is jumping ship.
But let's just imagine this, right?
Who's gonna do what?
It's a lot of money, and we have no clue how, if we're gonna, we're able to pay for it, and we have no clue the impact on, uh, rates, sewer rates, that, I'm not comfortable.
Right, we don't know.
Am I missing something?
We don't have the mechanisms, you, you get the money, right now, you don't know what to charge.
Right.
It would seem to me that if, if you, even if you pass it, it's gotta go to the board in two weeks, you know, give them time, so you can always vote it down at the board level, and you don't live there, if you don't have a Plan B in place or something along those lines, and, but if you voted, if you table it here, you are not gonna do it.
I got you, I got you.
Until after January, and I don't know what the date of the contract.
So Dan, does that, would that give you enough time to kind of come up with something like the numbers Bob had asked about?
Sure, yeah, I mean, if, because the county never actually really paid for any of this.
Yeah, I got.
The budget lines are not populated, there are not really dollars in there, and I don't interact with them, so I'm not very familiar with sort of how any of these two districts really function.
So with Supervisor Reinhardt's understanding, I would share that and vote in favor of it, knowing that.
So we'll vote it now, and then we'll.
Right. Yeah.
We'll figure it out in two weeks, or have it figured out.
Well, we'll have the information.
Have it figured out by end of weeks, so, yeah, have better numbers.
And then, and Frank can ask his guy if maybe they might be interested in.
Yeah, cause I'm more than willing to work with sort of whatever it takes to, to have this functional, you know, maybe.
You gotta get somebody to babysit this in a couple of weeks, or a month.
Plus, not, it sounds like, i- if Seneca Falls were willing, they're more familiar with it than anybody, it sounds like.
Yeah.
And Yaz had no interest in this?
Uh, no, I mean, we only, I actually extended the bid an additional week to get, the hopes of another, uh, bid.
Did you ask Yaz about it? Were they aware of it?
I'm not sure whether they were, I know I had sort of informally heard that, you know, they were approached about this some time ago and were not interested, and so, but no.
Well, I think you better go back a few years and finish out what the contract said that was supposed to do. You're supposed to have an advisory committee of two men, some from the county, the town attire, and town juniors. None of this stuff was ever worked out or completed. It's been a sore subject ever since it started.
Mm-hmm. That goes back to John Shepard.
I think you ought to do your jobs and get it done.
Vote it then, and we'll, um, go to it and take it to the board in, uh, two weeks, and, um, hopefully we'll have some fund bal, at least know what the fund balances, we got something to work with, so.
And actually, Dan, if you could email us sooner than that, or, yeah, that'd be great, thanks. After Thanksgiving.
I think so, I mean. Actually, I don't, yeah, I don't have access to fund balances, I don't see those in my minimalist view.
I think we just gave all the money, or else Seneca Falls took all the money to use, and we never got any, which I'm not blaming Seneca Falls on that, but.
Okay.
Somebody told us it was gonna be all worked out, great. Now, five years later.
Aye. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. All right.
Anybody opposed?
Um, okay, Dan, hold up.
I, I got an issue. Okay. So just, well, just sort of a heads up, so. Unfinished business. I know we had to reschedule our hillside meeting, that, that's fine, I get that, um, but, but just kind of a heads up, that my board voted at its last meeting to not pay for the, all the flushing we had to do based upon the input of our engineer and our, um, uh, water maintainer. That in fact, because the county had stopped with the.
Mixer?
Mixer, that in fact, that lowered the, that made it more difficult to sell, uh, quality water to.
Did you dump it, or?
Eric and Fayette, yeah, so with District Five and District Eight, and, and Varick's District Three, we, I mean, I think between the two of us, there was six to seven hundred thousand gallons of flushing in one quarter. That's insane, and part of it was due to the fact of the residuals that were coming out of the tank, and so, as a statement, my board said, we're not paying for it. Now, maybe eventually, yes, but once it gets resolved, that my board feels confident that they're being provided with the best possible water, so I'm just, I'm being honest, I'm being transparent, and giving the board a heads up.
Hold on. Okay.
You continue.
Stay tuned on that one.
All right, so that concludes our committee meetings, good night, everyone.
Good night, we aren't gonna have any executive sessions or something?
Sub, all right.